Sean, just swing your microphone.
Oh, pardon me, thank you very much. Good evening, today being Wednesday, March, uh, pardon, March, December 6th. We are here in Memorial Hall, ready to convene the meeting of the Westboro Select Board. If you are so able, please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and, and as always, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed by Westboro TV. Is there anyone here for Open Forum this evening? No? All right, thank you. Move on to item three on our agenda, concurrence of the appointment of the interim treasurer-collector, Stephen Price.
So, as the board is aware, our current treasurer-collector will be leaving on December 15th. And so, we were looking for interim services, and so, we are proposing to contract with Capital Strategy Solutions. Yeah, and, and so, through, through working with that group, they have identified Stephen Price, who is a former treasurer-collector, and now retired, to serve in that interim role. So, he's here, if the board has any questions pursuant to the charter, you would need to concur with my appointment, and then I'd also ask that you approve the proposal that's in your packet.
Right, thank you very much. Mr. Price, I don't know if you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself to the community.
How do you do? My name is Steve Price, I'm currently employed with Capital Strategic Solutions. I'm a retired municipal treasurer, I have over twenty years of experience. I've, I've been working for Capital Strategic Solutions for approximately eight months now, and I completed a similar project in the town of Pepperell, where I was able to offer operational support, training, issuing of tax bills, cash management, banking, tax title, the whole, the whole gamut of treasury tax collector work. And I'll be doing something similar here. I look forward to media, I look forward to working with your, your finance team and offering operational support.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, and, and your resume is quite extensive. Much appreciated for the support. Any questions?
I have no questions.
All right, can I get a motion?
Yes, Sean, I would move to concur with the town manager's appointment of Stephen Price to serve as interim treasurer-collector through a contract, through a contract with Capital Strategic Solutions as presented to the board.
Second, all those in favor? Four to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Price, thank you very much.
Welcome forward.
Welcome to Westboro.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too.
Thanks for being here, too.
We know, we know he knows how to find the building. All right. Next, item four, acceptance of a deed, the riding subdivision at Libby Lane and Harvest Way.
So, so in your packet is a deed for two parcels of land for the purpose of open space and conservation land through the riding subdivision, so this was something that was negotiated by the planning board, has already been accepted by the Conservation Commission as well as the current owner. All the deeds have been reviewed by town council, and so, this would be the last step in accepting those pieces of land as conservation and passive recreation.
I'll move to approve of the Conservation Commission's acceptance of a deed from Casa Investments, Inc., to property located on Libby Lane and Harvest Way, Westboro, for conservation and passive recreation purposes.
Second, any questions? All those in favor? Four to zero. Thank you. All right, item number five, request to approve and execute Mass DOT acknowledgment of project eligibility.
Good evening.
Good evening.
While Chris is getting set up, I, we should just note, so this meeting was originally posted with a presentation from the library, as well as a presentation on the dog park. Because we had to move the meeting to tonight, neither of those could, were, folks were available, and so, we'll push that to the nineteenth meeting.
Glad to cover on the nineteenth.
But just a reminder that there is a public session for the dog park design on December 12th.
The next Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get started if you're ready.
Yes, please go ahead, thank you.
So, purpose, we, we've been, you've sent, you've been sent a memo by Mass DOT District Three that says we are eligible with a project to receive federal funding through the state's transportation improvement program, and the request in the memo was that you acknowledge that we're eligible, and then we send that back to Mass DOT. That's, that's the basics. So, the next step after that would be that we would notify CMR PC that we are interested in getting onto the tip, and then over the next several months, we would, the process for getting on the tip would happen, and at the outcome of that, early next year, we would know whether we make it onto the 2025 to 2029 tip, which would mean we'd be on the 2029 end of it. So, this would be a project that would be executed in 2029.
Okay.
So, I will provide a brief summary of the project, just so you know what we're talking about, because you probably don't even know what we're talking about. But I want to give a little context first, so first off, in the memo, it says, on the first page, the cost is 8.82 million. That's actually different than the amount we provided. We, our estimate was 8.58, so, we need to figure out that discrepancy, it's not really a big deal, but when we go back to Mass DOT with hopefully your signature on this memo, then we'll just clarify that and make sure we have the right numbers, but it is a discrepancy. So, it's been, I think, a goal, well, I know it's been a goal of ours, to get on the tip and take advantage of this money that's available to, you know, any town that can pursue it, and we haven't, and so, we wanted to do that. So, so over the past year and a half or so, just to get to this point, which is that we're eligible, we haven't even gotten any money yet, we've spent about eighteen months working through a process to find a, someone to help us do it, a designer, someone who knows the system and has done it before, and all those important things, and then help us identify and scope some projects, and then narrow that down to something, and then work through Mass DOT with lots of conversation about refinements and cost estimates and everything else, and then go to their project review committee and get through that process to, leads us to today. So, that's multiple months getting us to this point. So, I'll talk about the project, but anybody in this room could say, well, why didn't you do this project, how'd you pick that? So, you know, we, we looked at a number of things, we wanted to be competitive, we needed the price to be within a range that we thought would, you know, meet the, the tip selection, so, pretty much District Three, the CMPO gets about twenty mil, roughly twenty million dollars, you know, a year for project allocation, so if you come in with a project that's, you know, eighteen million dollars, you're probably not getting it, because that means they can't give any money to anybody else, you gotta be, come in with a number that is reasonable, and we thought the number we had was reasonable. You gotta be competitive, competitive in terms of it's money coming through Mass DOT, so, you gotta help them achieve whatever their objectives are, and so, if we're doing something that helps us but doesn't really benefit anybody else, then probably not gonna be competitive. So, a long list of things that we went through, ultimately, we, we identified the project I'm gonna talk about, which I'll be very brief, because we don't have much detail on it, which is all concept. The only other point I'll make before we go into the project is the cost to the town. So, that eight-point-something number that we're saying is the estimate for the construction and engineering services to do the project, that's for that part. To get to that point, you need to design, and the town takes on the responsibility to do the design. And if for some reason there's other things like acquiring land or something like that, that's all, as the memo says, the responsibility of the town. So, we've already invested some money, and Chapter 90 money can be used to, to do this, and so, that's, that's our intent, at least initially, is to siphon off some of our Chapter 90 money, which we use to pave roads, and we're not gonna be paving roads if we're, at least some roads, because we're spending on this. We dedicate some of that money over the next three to four years in this process to get us to the point where we build the road, or do the project. If we decided along the way we wanted to fund it some other way, then, then we could do that, but that's our plan right now, so that we're not, like, wondering if we can even do it. And typically, we, so we don't have a number on that design cost, that would be a follow-on step, where, again, this is all conceptual, but typically, we ballpark 10 percent, so, so that's the number we're probably looking at for design costs over the life of the design, so, that's not on day one, that's multiple phases over time where we're spending this money, so we'll have multiple years of Chapter 90 money, where we're not spending it all on this project, we're just taking a little bit each year, putting it towards the project, and then the rest goes towards paving roads. So, I'll talk through the project, sort of orient you at the map, because it's, it's, you know, imagery, so it's not super easy to see right away, but let me just get a pointer going here. I had it, disappeared. All right.
Keeps coming and going.
Well, it was red, easier to see, but it's not anymore, but hopefully you can see that arrow. So, this is Route Nine and Lyman intersection right here, obviously Route Nine, this is Lyman Street, come down Lyman Street, everybody's familiar, I think, with the Lyman Street, East Main Street intersection, Hastings Elementary School, so, from, from here to the other end, Thomas Newton Drive, which is about where I was looking for, but don't need that now, there we go, Thomas Newton Drive, Windsor Ridge area of East Main Street. So, that's the project area we're talking about. Lots of things along, so we got a school, a couple of high-density, multifamily areas, and then some, some residential, single-family areas that, that all can be connected by this project. So, there's a lot of words on this slide, you don't need to read them, but I'll, I'll walk you through, and I'm gonna start down here. So, right here is Flanders Road, East Main Street intersection. I refer to that as kind of the anchor point for this project, so one of the reasons for selecting this location is that specific intersection, which the town has looked at a couple of times in the past, we actually spent a lot of money at some point in the past on a start-up of design for some sort of traffic control there. So, so we know there's something that should be done there, we don't know exactly what it is, but we want to start with that. And so, part of the project would be to evaluate that intersection and figure out what solutions might be necessary there. Don't know what that is, but it could be nothing, it could be traffic signal, it could be roundabout, and, and we're required through this program to look at very specific things. So, this intersection control evaluation, which is highlighted here, that's a specific term with a specific process that our designer will go through to evaluate the intersection. So, you continue down the road, and from that intersection, we said, okay, well, what else can we do along this, this corridor to improve it? And so, adding an eight-foot wide shared-use path on, on this side of the, the street, so the, I guess, the east side or south side. Heading northeast, you get to the Bellows Road, McDonald's area, if you're familiar with that, so, so there's a crossing point there, it's already existing, we would jump across the street and then follow with an eight-foot path all the way to the underpass. We're all familiar with the underpass, it's pretty narrow, but there is a, it's not a sidewalk, but there's something that represents a sidewalk there. So, we would narrow the path, go under the bridge, and expand back out to eight feet, and continue along the, the west side or north side of, of East Main Street. There's a couple of intersections here, and this is all Mass DOT, there's Mass DOT property in there, so, we don't know if it's required, but potentially some evaluation of some of those intersections with Route Nine and, and Bellows, but we'll, we'll see if that's required. Continue, keep going all the way down East Main Street on the north or west, or west side, all the way to Thomas Newton, where it would, where it would end. And so, that provides, and so, that, that project would be, in summary, fixing, addressing the intersection of Flanners, repaving and res- resurfacing, doing all the curb and everything else along the road, and then adding this shared-use path, and getting this out to Thomas Newton. And there was lots of discussion about, you know, where do we stop, and can we go further, and, and all those sorts of things, and this is ultimately what we ended up with in terms of lots of people providing input and for, outside of Westboro, and agreeing that this is a reasonable scope. So, that is, that's the, the gist of the project. And this, this slide is, is the depth we have in terms of any sort of analysis, so there's tons of work that still has to be done, but we're not gonna invest any money in that until we know we actually have a viable project and we're on the tip. And so, we've got several months till that happens, and even then, if we decided, you know, we, for some reason, we didn't think we wanted to commit, then we would just pull off, but that's where we are, and that's, our recommendation is that we do pursue this and take advantage of this money that's, that's out there, and we think it's competitive, and go from there. There is opportunity, if you're aggressive to, and you can avoid some of the stumbling blocks like East Mintz and those sorts of things, which are typically the, the showstoppers, and that's also a reason why this site was identified, because there is more significant right-of-way, and there will be things we deal with, but they seem to be less here than other places, and so, potentially, our project could be moved forward if we're ready and somebody else isn't, and so, maybe it's not 29, it's 27, or 28, or something like that, but that's all to be determined. So, any questions?
Thank you very much.
I'll just say, in the last week, two residents who would not know that this effort was underway contacted and said, you know, is there ever anything that can be done about the Route Nine, you know, the underpass for Route 30 under Route Nine, in providing safer transit for people on bicycle and pedestrians? And I think this is also a good location, because the number of pedestrians traversing, you know, that section of Route 30 has definitely increased, and I don't see that going away, so, you know, this, I think, is a great, a great selection, and it will solve a connectivity problem for the community, as well as make the flow of, I drive that section every day, make the flow of traffic safer, go for it.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you, Chris, for the presentation, very thorough, even though it's just very conceptual, and thank you for explaining the, the process of the tip, because it is lengthy, and I'm thrilled that Westboro is finally jumping into that process, so, appreciate your leadership. Just to echo what Alan said, and just to add on to that, not only are we seeing higher pedestrian, although I think it's kind of intuitive to what he was saying, that, you know, this aligns also with the economic development and some of the, a little bit of the downtown development grant that we're doing to kind of connect all ends and, and trunks of the town, so, again, fully supportive of this, I think it was just in our last Select Board meeting, we had someone at Open Forum talk about this very spot, so, great timing. One question, you mentioned about eighteen months of work so far that have gone into just getting us to this, was that, was, was that funded and supported from just kind of within your existing budget, or did you use Chapter 90 funds?
We used Chapter 90.
Okay, and, and was that both supported from internal staff and consultant-type engagement? I don't need the specifics, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, predominantly the consultants, and just to get to the PRC, which is the committee that just met to get us to this point, there's a whole form you gotta fill, the whole process for that, and, and we basically, so we took this, just so you know, we took this on, it's a really heavy lift, like, there's a lot of just administration that goes along with this, so, kind of the deal internally was, we, we can take it on, but we, we're gonna rely on the consultant to kind of carry us through.
Sure.
And of course, we pay for that.
Yep.
But we have, you know, only a certain amount of capacity, and it's either we pay somebody else to do it, or we're not doing it, because there's other things that we're doing right now, that, and this is five years from now, so.
Well, and you're working with someone who's familiar with a very administrative-laden process, so, great, thank you very much, that's all I have, Sean.
Thank you very much, I'll be, yeah, and I, and I agree, and I think that, you know, greatly improves the chances of actually getting the grant.
Yes.
You know, it makes complete sense, so, thank you for all this work so far, hopefully it pays off.
It will, I know it will.
I would move to authorize the chair to sign the acknowledgment of project eligibility notification on behalf of the town of Westboro to Mass DOT for the Route 30 East Road Improvement Project from Hastings Elementary School at 111 East Main Street to Thomas Newton Drive.
Second?
All those in favor?
Four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for saying that.
All right, next, item six, the Waste Management Exploratory Committee Recommendation and Committee Next Steps.
Hello?
Do, do you want me to kind of, do you want?
Do you want to do an intro?
Yeah, so, I, I would just, so, the board is aware, certainly, you know, the public is aware, that the Waste Management Exploratory Committee was created, they gave a presentation to this board in May, and made a recommendation at that time that the town moved to look, explore a curbside program, and so, the board voted to accept that recommendation and requested basically further work. And so, since that time, the committee has met several times, and I know Katie and it looks like Pete are gonna do that presentation, they'll name all the members of the committee that have been actively involved. I think what is before the board, certainly tonight, is to hear that recommendation, I, I should say, I serve on that committee, Christie is advisory to that committee. The, I think the board is to hear that recommendation, potentially to take a vote to accept the recommendations of the committee, and then to determine kind of next steps as it relates to the committee, and certainly, any questions, I would encourage the board to ask the presenters. Christie, you have anything else?
I just want to add that when the committee gave its report, or recommendations in May, we, we were, we had been told that Harvey's would no longer have an operating transfer station, and so, the reason that the committee has since been meeting is because we were then told that Harvey's was willing to keep the transfer station open, and so, they just considered their recommendations in light of that new information.
I, sorry, forgot about that important, why we went back, circled around here, thank you.
Alrighty, so, Katie Curtin-Mestre, 26 Linda Street.
I'm Pete Allen, a member of the committee.
So, this is a current member, committee members and roles, just as a FYI, and this is our charter, just a reminder that the charter is to provide a comprehensive report and recommendation to the Select Board with the aim of reducing total residential town waste in alignment with the Mass DEP Waste Reduction Goal of 30% by 2030. So, we've been looking at how we can increase recycling and composting in the town, and secondarily, decreasing contamination. And just as our reference, in case you guys don't know, throughout this presentation, we're gonna talk about Massachusetts Waste Ban Law. These are all of the items that are currently by law, not supposed to be thrown away into the regular trash. It's important for us to know that, because any, every town has to have a comprehensive, solid waste management plan for all of these items in some way, shape, or form. And feel free to jump in with any questions. So, last time we came to the Select Board, as Christie mentioned, our recommendations were based on the fact that the transfer station was gonna close, but now, as we know, the transfer station is gonna stay open, and so, now, we, we had, the committee came up with some alternative recommendations. I'm gonna take you briefly through the four recommendations that we looked at, but then ultimately, the committee is recommending that the town move forward with evaluating two of these four recommendations. So, these are the four recommendations. Important thing to point out is that all of the options that you see here, which are numbered one, two, three, and four, all of these options are fully pay-as-you throw. So, what that basically means is whatever flavor of curbside program that you see listed here, whatever variation that you see on the transfer station, all of these programs are pay-as-you throw, because in working with Irene and the DEP, it's pay-as-you throw has been proven to be the best program that the state has to offer, and for towns to implement to reduce waste. So, if you look at option number one, option number one is, is very similar to the status quo, which is to say that we have a voluntary curbside program with Harvey's Waste Connections. Harvey's is open at the transfer station, same as it is today, so it's kind of status quo, but we have a pay-as-you throw system. Program, option number two, which is one of the ones that we are recommending to bring forward, in option two, what we continue to have is a voluntary curbside program that residents can opt into if they want to, but the town will now pay Harvey's and Waste Connections for, sorry, this is a little confusing how it's written, so, in number two, the town is going to pay to collect recycling and food waste. So, the idea would be a curbside, we're encouraging everyone to recycle, also encouraging everyone to separate out their food waste, to really help us achieve our waste goals, and then the transfer station is open, same as usual. Number three is a full curbside program, where the town is paying for everything, not just recycling and food waste, but also trash. In number three, transfer station status quo, again, pay-as-you throw, and then number four would contemplate a town contracted curbside program for everything, holler potentially TBD, and then a transfer station that would be open for DEP waste ban items, but not for trash, and likely in that scenario, we would need to find potentially a new location and a new vendor, because potentially, you know, Harvey's would not be interested in option four. The, the committee discussed these four options, you know, at length, and we are recommending that the town move forward with an investigation of both option two and option number four. Any questions?
You're going into detail, right, on two and four?
Yeah, and then there's more details on two and four coming up.
That might be helpful.
Yep. All right, so, our recommendations are, as I previously said, we are, committee is endorsing pay-as-you throw, regardless of what program we ultimately implement, we're recommending options two and four, which I'm gonna have two slides that'll go into further detail, so you can see it spelled out better, and we're also recommending that the pla, the plan include town funding for the collection of food waste, regardless of which program is ultimately implemented. Food waste accounts for 20 to 25% of the waste that is getting thrown out, so it's a real, really easy opportunity to reduce the amount of waste that the town generates. It also supports our, our, our climate action goals, because instead of throwing that waste away, it, that food waste can be converted to energy instead, and apparently, Irene from the DEP has shared that there is a potential for even Wheel Operator in Milbury to Elevator in Milbury to start to be able to also accept the food waste there, which just would make it easy from a collection perspective. Any questions on the recommendations?
You're gonna do four now?
Sorry, what?
You're gonna do four.
Two and four, both of them?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is just further details on program option two. As I prior mentioned, program option two, transfer station, residents would pay an annual fee to the town for the usage of the transfer station. Because it is pay-as-you-throw, the residents would pay for imprinted trash bags that would carry the town name and seal, similar to other.
Katie, can you hang on just one second, just, will you just close this one?
Go ahead, you can close it. Yeah, close it.
Yep, thank you. Speaking of cleaning.
Speaking of cleaning.
Yeah, thank you.
And trash, recycling, food waste, et cetera, all current items would be collected at the transfer station, same as current state, but the big change would be to move to pay-as-you-throw program. On the curbside, as I mentioned, residents would pay Harvey's only for the collection of the trash. The town would cover the, cover to pick up the recycling and the food waste, same concept with the pay-as-you-throw bags, and this would cover all one to three family households. So this is what program option number two looks like, as one of the options that we are recommending. Then in number four, again, big change in number four, and basically if you look at program option number four, this is kinda one, just what we recommended in May, when we thought that the transfer station would potentially be closing, so it's consistent with what you heard in May. So in this scenario, we basically have a fully curbside program for everything, and the transfer station, whether it's today's transfer station or a different designated location, that transfer station would be open only for current waste ban items. So that's the two options that we're recommending, that we think are the most feasible and that align with our waste reduction goals.
So in terms of results, if you were to accept either two or four, or both in fact, we were told by the Mass D E P that over there on the right-hand side of this slide, you'll see that Westboro is unique, and not unique in a good way, in terms of our having 2,700 pounds per household of trash that's currently disposing. There are various towns, and this chart that was provided, we've been very fortunate to be able to work with Irene Congdon, who is here in the audience. She happens to be the municipal advisor for Mass D E P for all of the 75 communities in central Mass. And she was able to provide this information that basically shows that as you do things like adopting certain container sizes and ultimately pay-as-you-throw, that clearly the reductions become very, very substantial, and that if you accept either number two or number four, we should be in the realm of, let's say, that second bar there, which is significantly below where we are today. The composting recommendation that we're making may be a little bit surprising to some of you, I know it was actually to me, but Irene, again, brought forward information from things that are being incinerated in Milbury, in the trash-to-electricity effort that they have there. And a survey of those materials showed that 32% of what they are dealing with that arrives at the incinerator is in fact compostable. And that is why all of us basically thought that composting is something that may require a lot of community education to get people to do it, but in fact, it would have a real payoff. I guess I'll go back and make just a remark about how the recommendation that we made back on May 9th, that in fact you selected back when the current transfer station availability was off the table. The reason why we're still bringing that back to your attention is the fact that there is some reluctance. In option two, you're basically dealing with one vendor. In order to continue to have use of the transfer station, and we know that a lot of our citizens want to do that, in fact, I think we have figures that show that more trash is being brought to the transfer station than in fact are picked up by the Tidy Town trash pickups. But we are reluctant, in fact, to offer something where there is no other vendor, to see whether it's reasonable. Now, I think it's clear that if we were to get a reasonable contract with Waste Connections, that that would certainly be our option. But it is important to remember that, in fact, being able to go out to bid to everyone is the only way you're going to determine whether things are best in terms of the cost. And of course, we have no costs, so we can't make a recommendation on that, we just pointed out. We also need to point out the fact that it would be very difficult if we went to a different holler to deal with not having the transfer station as we have it now. So if you accept our recommendation, then we see that during this current month, we would recommend that you move forward on a program option, and in January you would obtain financials, we would know what the cost would be from Waste Connections, and review the draft implementation plan. I know this is a tight timetable, but the next fiscal starts on July 1, and in order to do that, the implementation plan we feel could be done, even though it's tight, in February. And then, community education certainly, on pay-as-you-throw and all the details of the new plan, if it's going to take effect on July 1, and it would be a multi-year contract. I think Waste Connections has indicated that they would be interested in having a long-term one, and so would we, I think. So this is kind of a proposed timeline that we would recommend, and, let's see, I guess I skipped one. So I, we do understand that in terms of next steps, that the Board of Health is working on updating holler regulations. We are getting Mass D E P technical assistance in the form of Irene's advice, and she could be involved in the RFP and contracting process as well. And again, paperwork needs to be signed by the middle of March in order to get the grant money that is in fact eligible. We put it down as a question, but it's more a statement that if you would like us to be involved in the community education part of this, then we are ready, willing, and able, but that is up to you giving us an additional charge.
Thank you very much, any questions?
Thank you for this, and thank you for the options, and thank you for going back to the well and meeting again with the new information, so appreciate that. And the question is kind of across from my ignorance, but just maybe help me understand what that is. So basically, in program, both of them I guess, but the program option two I'm looking at, residents, if they want to use the transfer station, pay for the annual fee like we do today. The trash bags, that's all that would be allowed in the basically transfer space of the transfer station to be used?
Correct.
And how would that be, I guess the question always comes into, I know we've had some issues at the transfer station, I guess, with, you know, kinda monitoring and what, whatever, how would we propose that working that we would monitor to ensure that all that went in there was pay-as-you-throw?
I think we would need to work with Harvey's Waste Connections, you know, for implementation. I mean, I think there are many options to consider, you know, including whether, you know, we actually have some Westboro part-time staff, you know, doing the monitoring, and not having the Harvey's Waste Connection people, you know, do the monitoring, but you know, there's, you know, other towns do have and have successfully moved forward with pay-as-you-throw at their, at their transfer station, so it's definitely feasible.
Perfect.
Yeah, I would just add, I think that that's very much part of the, getting the cost proposals and understanding, you know, how, in this case, how Waste Connections would, you know, bid that out.
Great.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it realistically mean that for, you know, some of the things where people are bringing their waste to the transfer station, given that it's now pay-as-you-throw and you have to bring it in the bags, then it would likely mean that, you know, people might have to get, you know, rent like, you know, like a little mini, I don't know what you call them, like a little mini container by your house. I mean, if you had a lot of trash to throw out, you're not gonna most likely go put it in pay-as-you-throw bags.
Great, thank you for that. Then following on that question, the second piece of curbside, likewise, even if someone contracted, you know, in option two, their requirement would still be to use pay-as-you-throw in their basically curbside program?
Yeah, and I, and we should have mentioned, this important point that I'm sorry I failed to mention, and you can see in this picture, that the pay-as-you-throw program for curbside is put the pay-as-you-throw bags in the carts. That is the, that is the approach that the haulers prefer, because it lends for automation. And we've also know from talking to other towns that it's just easier to implement, because you don't have trash out in a bag on the curb that potentially a critter could, you know, go come and open. So it's a pay-as-you-throw bag that you put inside the carts.
I would imagine that also would somehow have to be enforced though as well, that carts all have covers on them, they come, they pick them up, dump them in the back, but.
Yeah.
How would they know, but I guess it comes with the education piece too, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think both at transfer station and curbside, you need to have, you know, periodic inspection, you know, to make sure that people are, you know, following the pay-as-you-throw guidelines.
No, I think, I think this, I think the recommendation of great, I think pay-as-you-throw, as you said, it's been proven to work, it's, it will take some education, it's different, but I think having it in these options to me is the, personally is kind of a good mix and a good, good approach, so that's all the questions I had, thank you.
So just clarification on option two, before we move off of that. If someone wants to use the transfer station, they're paying an annual fee, and then they're also paying because they're buying the bags?
Yeah, similar to the curbside people?
So the curbside people would be paying for the pickup?
Yeah.
And then for?
Paying for their trash.
For the trash that's in, that's getting picked up?
And the bags, and the bags.
And the bags. So, so for example, you would envision, you know, it would be most likely that if the town is now paying for recycling and food waste at curbside, and you are paying for, you know, the bags themselves, then, you know, I, you know, we would assume that there would probably be some change to what you're paying for your curbside fee.
So the fee would, we'd expect the fees for the transfer station and the curbside to go down because we're paying for the actual trash?
I don't, I don't know necessarily what the, what the shift would be to the fees, but you're either paying a fee to go to transfer station, or you're paying a fee because you want the trash to be collected curbside, and then however much you wanna throw out is the, is the pay-as-you-throw bags.
And I would, I would just add for clarification, just for anyone watching, as well as for transparency here, when we say that the town pays for recycling and food waste in option number two, that, you know, how that actually gets allocated ultimately the town is all of us, right? Taxpayers.
Right.
Right, so if you are a resident that says, I don't wanna pay privately for curbside in option two, if that would be what we went forward with, I'm gonna take my trash to the transfer station, we have to kinda work through, if we're doing a town-wide recycling and food waste curbside, those individuals, one to three family, would not be receiving curbside pickup, would be receiving curbside pickup for recycling and compost. So there would, there would be presumably a cost to them in addition to the fee to use the transfer station.
No, my assumption is there wouldn't, that if the town is providing curbside recycling and food waste pickup for everyone, it's for everyone.
Well, yeah, no, let me, let me just, when I, the town, it has to be funded somehow.
Right.
So it gets funded from taxpayers.
Right, so the taxpayers, the town through the, the taxpayers through the town.
Right.
Picks up recycling and compost at every one to three household location.
I just, I guess I wanna be clear that it, when we shift this, so I'm supportive of where we went, but I just wanna be clear, if we, as we make this shift and we look to reduce waste, it's not free to do this, someone's gonna have to pay for it.
Right, right, right.
And I know you know that, but I just wanna be clear.
No, no, but I was just making sure that we weren't saying that if you don't do curbside trash pickup, then there's an additional fee separate from the tax levy for the recycling pickup, because the trucks are different, the routes and days are different. So if the taxpayer is gonna be paying for curbside recycling and compost, it would be for everyone, no additional fee, and how trash is handled would then be up to an individual household directly.
Yeah.
Okay.
In our discussions, we indicated that we would like to think that the people who are currently paying to have their recycling picked up would in fact, net-net, get an advantage, because now there is a pickup at every single household in your neighborhood, but again, until the costs come in, we can't make that statement, but it certainly should be much more efficient for Waste Connections to be picking up at every household instead of here and there.
And the only other thing I just, I think, and this was on one of the slides that Pete presented at the end, is that the, for households three plus, or it's really four plus, that falls under the Board of Health jurisdiction and holler regulations, so they follow a different trash recycling process.
Yeah.
And I think, just so that we're clear in that.
No, no, we're, we're fine, that's good for the public too. Four, four units or more, it's effectively a commercial.
Right, but the Board of Health is working toward updating those regulations so that those units have access to recycling as well as trash, because they don't currently.
And hopefully that's for household and commercial. I'm going with their, but I'll call the Board of Health and ask them.
Okay, yeah, well, that's.
That's their bailiwick, that's their lane, not ours.
They're here.
They are here, so.
So, but we don't have to get into that tonight.
Also, it's worth mentioning, as noted here on this slide, is the town is currently paying $46 per ton for trash, whether curbside trash or transfer station trash, and also paying $77.78 per ton for the tipping fee at Wheel Elevator, so let's round that up to 80. We're paying $126 per ton for trash all in, so it would stand to reason as we put forward the measures that you see with option number two or option number four, you know, that even if the town is now subsidizing the curbside food waste and the curbside recycling, that should lead to a material reduction in the tonnage for the trash side. And keep in mind, we're currently sitting at $80 for the tipping fee at the Wheel Elevator, but you know, that multi-year contract is gonna expire, and then we're gonna be probably put into potentially like a higher per ton rate, so the sooner that we can start diverting recycling and waste from Wheel Elevator, like we showed here in this slide, it's ultimately helping us achieve our waste reduction goals as a D E P, and hopefully also helping potentially to curb costs for the town.
And then my other question has to do actually with sort of the wording of option three versus option four. So, 'cause three calls out Harvey as a specific vendor, where, and four does not, four is like any vendor, but in reality, this goes out to bid, right? So option three is really saying a town curbside program.
It's actually exempt.
Pardon?
It's actually exempt.
Oh, it is exempt?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, okay.
So, number four was created really in support of this going out to bid, but with the knowledge if you do that, then, and someone, and there's a more favorable, however that's measured by the bidding process-
Right.
Um, option that if it is not Harvey slash Waste Connections, it is highly likely that the transfer station would not be accessible. So if, if another-
So, that, that really is getting to my question. So the sense is that for Wa, Harvey's Waste Connection, for them to keep the transfer station open, really is tied to them providing the curbside program?
Yeah, they, it's kind of all in. And so, so number four becomes more complicated, not, not, I mean, it's doable, and who knows kind of like what the long-term future is, right, for the town, um, but it's not insignificant to think about the lift to create a, uh, location, right? To accept the DEP waste ban items that Katie had put up at the, you know, the beginning. Other towns have done it, they have different processes, et cetera. Um, I think that the committee, I think it's fair to say we recognize, given the timeframe, number four would be a real challenge at this time. It's not to say we can't look at it in the future. But I don't, I don't wanna speak for all the committee members, but that was what I certainly gathered from our conversation.
The other big difference between three and four is, three is still bringing trash to the transfer station, whereas four, the only items going to the transfer station, whether the current one or whatever else we set up instead, is no longer trash, it's just the DEP waste ban items.
Shaw, is?
Yep.
So I, just to follow, should have asked this before, but to what you said, so item two, or I guess, or item three, but go back to item two, 'cause it's what, one of the two you recommended, um, if a resident decides that they don't want curbside and wants to kind of stay, call it more, to what we do currently, that third bullet, even though the town pays for curbside recycling and composting for everybody, a resident could decide that they wanna bring, that they wanted to bring their compost and recycling-
Yeah, I mean, they-
To the transfer station along with their pay as you throw bags?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if they, if they prefer to do everything at the transfer station versus doing, you know, part at, um, part at curbside and part at transfer station, you know, that's certainly their, um, option. I, I would venture to guess, just based on data that Irene and I were able to get from the town of Crafton, if the town gets behind food waste and educates the town and residents and makes it easier, we're probably gonna see a lot more people do food waste curbside, because taking your food waste to the transfer station, it's, it's not that it can't be done, but it's not exactly a pleasant experience.
I wanna tip over in your car.
And then on the recycling, if you have a lot of recycling, you know, it just might be, uh, you know, maybe people, I would envision, maybe people at first will continue transfer station, but then maybe eventually they'll, they'll like the va, uh, the convenience of the curbside.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. Um, so curious, so the, for number two, the town funded curbside recycling and food waste, so for, for those in town, what does that look like in terms of how many containers, how that is getting sorted?
There's a, there's a couple options depending on, um, implementation, so one option that we're starting to see implemented, Irene has this data from Connecticut. Connecticut is doing pilots where, when you go to throw out your, your trash, so you have one bag for pay as you throw trash, and another bag that is for, um, the food waste, that's one option. Another option would be that you have, like, uh, for those of you who are doing Black Earth right now, you could have like a small little cart, you know, for the food waste, you know, so there's a couple different, you know, options for how the, those are kind of the two major options for how food waste gets handled. Um, on the recycling front, we have found, again from the data Irene has given us, that whether you pick up recycling once a week or you pick it up every other week, the amount of recycling that ends up getting collected is about the same, so we'd probably be on recycling every other week, because there's not a lot of benefit and there's a lot more cost if the recycling becomes, you know, uh, once a week. Irene, anything to add? Okay.
And so, would all your recycling go into a single container and then it would get-
Single stream?
A large container, and it would be single stream. It seems that all the haulers are moving towards single stream as opposed to, uh, in the past, there were some towns, they would pick up certain kinds of recyclables one week and then another, uh, they would pick up other things. They seem to all be moving towards single stream, putting everything into that, uh, container.
And, and that's, if you have private curbside now for recycling, that's what, you know, you're doing, single stream.
What if you go to Waste Connections, Harvey's still-
You're sorting, right.
Although, although-
They've gone somewhat single stream, but, yeah.
Yeah, they're moving to single stream.
They've indicated they're moving there anyway, at the transfer station, so.
All right, okay. Um, any other questions?
Thank you.
Great.
So...
I would move to accept the recommendations of the West Waste Management, or the recommendation of the Waste Management Exploratory Committee as the committee's preferred option, but further to request that the town manager provide for the board's consideration financial information related to each option considered by the committee, which I think was actually outlined in their presentation as well, so does concur with their recommendation.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, no.
Nope. All those in favor? Four to zero. Thank you very much for your hard work on this, much appreciated.
I think, and I also think as, as a, and Shelby, you may have been going there, but I think as a fault, there was the request of the, put as a question, but really as a, offer, I guess I'll call it, of the committee, I think we would, it would be a different charge for this committee, so I think we should talk about, I'd put that out, that we may wanna talk about it, the future agenda, 'cause it'll probably be disbanding or reshape it, I mean, however we wanna word it, but it was basically that, that the charge we've originally given, this has come to conclusion by this, if, you know, with, with acceptance, and then I would love to take them up on their offer to help with the education, I think that's gonna be huge, they have the experience, so they will do it.
Yeah.
I think it'd be great, but I think we have to do it, separate action items for that.
Yeah, and I think since we're not, we wouldn't be looking for a recommendation from that group, I don't know that it would be as formal as a committee, I think it could be potentially just a working group to help us support that effort, I don't know.
Yeah, I think the other option that has been discussed is, um, you know, folding the, um, kind of the support of the education of the town um, into the efforts of, you know, Sustainable Westboro, and Pete has been actively participating in even the current recommendation that we brought forward today, uh, so, you know, that is also like, uh, like a option as well, so I think committee members are, are happy to help out with the education phase, uh, whether you guys come back and say, however it, it gets like structured going forward, I think we're pretty open to wanting to help the town in whatever capacity makes sense.
Yeah.
Great, terrific, thank you.
Yeah, so I, I would agree with that. I, I also, I think that we've seen, um, similar to when we had the CPA Exploratory Committee, they did their work and, and then we, you know, kind of basically said that work is done, and, and so I, I look at that as, I look at this as following along with that, but I certainly think that the committee education piece is significant, and so if we can tap into kind of an existing, uh, forum committee through Sustainable Westboro, that makes sense. I also, this, the next steps, it's gonna be critical to work closely with the Board of Health to make sure that, um, how we're going about this process is, you know, kind of aligned, um, with, with thoughts from that board and certainly from our, um, Board of Health Director, so. And, uh, Christie, at some point, um, I would imagine there would be, you would maybe form some sort of York through you, kind of like a work group or something around, uh, this process, is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, and I, I wanna thank the committee for all of its work, it's been a lot, a lot of discussion, and I wanna also thank Irene for, um, you're not going away though, so, so as we work through this process, so, thank you, the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do we need to vote? Do we?
Uh, no, just that, just to move to a second recommendation, right? We did.
Do we?
We did. We voted, right?
Okay, I, it always happens so quickly, okay, all right.
Um, next, item number seven, consideration of town clerk position from elected to appointed.
So there's, there's nobody here, um, to present on this, it's just a follow-up of a discussion that you had at a meeting in October. Dexter Blaisa come forward with a recommendation that the, that the board, uh, consider looking at the, um, the appointment of the town clerk or, um, the election of the town clerk, moving it to an appointed position, um, for several reasons. Um, John Arnold was at that meeting as well and had provided you some feedback based on, um, his participation in a charter review committee, I think in two thousand eight, um, and so he followed, he did follow up with, um, with that report, he did forward that to the board, so that's also in your packet, uh, two thousand six, sorry. Um, so, this is really just on the agenda to consider how you wanna move forward with this discussion, whether or not you wanna appoint a committee, um, if you want to, um, can, consider, receive some more information, uh, yourselves, I did put some information in your packet, um, that really underscores the significant increase in responsibilities and the changes in law around what the town clerk does, specific to elections. Um, I, I would recommend, regardless of whichever way you go, that you hear from our current town clerk, um, to get her perspective, as she's been our town clerk for about a year, but has, uh, served in that office for several years.
No, thank you, Christie. Um, yeah, I get folks' thoughts on this, or, I'm trying to think, so that review was in two thousand and six. I know there's since then been another charter review committee, but I don't know if that committee completed its work or not.
I was on that committee.
No, there was another one in between, before the one that you were on, um, that did look at, um, I'd have to go back and grab the minutes. I know that they did talk about it and ultimately left it as an elected position, and that was in two thousand sixteen, I believe. But then there was another one that Alan was on.
Right, yeah. Ours, this wasn't in the scope of the charter review, that was a form of government.
Discussion. And, and I don't know that there's something broader that folks think we should be discussing, I'll, I'll throw that out to the board for thoughts, or um, beyond just this, this specific job of the town clerk, if there's, you know.
I was just gonna say that, um, last year, one of your goals, um, was to, was to look at a few different positions, so one of them was also the town planner. Um, and so we did move forward after discussion with the planning board, um, with a couple Warren articles at town meeting to change that appointing authority, um, and, and which failed. So, but that was, this, the town clerk position was also part of that, uh, goal, it was just, we just didn't move forward with that piece of it at the time.
Yeah, so I would love to hear from our current, um, town clerk, and, um, I, I think, um, I guess, um, I don't know, I guess I'm not clear if this change requires a charter review, or the board could make that change? With, obviously has to be approved at town meeting.
Right, so similar to the planning board, you could, um, you could put forward an article to make the change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I think that there's potentially significant risk by having this, this position, given its complexity and how it's changed over time, um, remaining as an elected position, um, and, um, I thought Mr. Boyce, um, aligned concerns eloquently, and so I do think we should, um, probably act on this, uh, sooner than later, I'd be supportive of that, but I would love to hear from our town clerk.
Yeah, I, I concur with that, I think. I really am in agreement with everything you've said, Shelby, just to add that, remember the, our past town clerk, since retired, had brought this forward as a suggestion as well, that she believed that this should be not an elected position, but, um, an appointed position, so um, I too think that it's, that we should review it, um, I think hearing from our existing town clerk and understanding, I think, it was outlined some of stuff in our packet about kind of what the mass association of town clerks is saying, so her, her counterparts and, um, hearing that, and then figuring out steps that we might wanna take, but I do think it's, it's time for us to think about this again, 'cause I think times have changed, and I think there's, there is definitely risk, um, as Mr. Boyce brought up. And I think I echoed that meeting of remembering way back in time where an elected position, out of town clerk, but there is risk that someone could get elected, difference here, this, that was an appointed position, but you could elect somebody to a town clerk that couldn't fulfill any of the responsibilities, but would still be getting paid, 'cause the only way to get rid of him is for the, if they're, if they're elected, is to have them go through the process to basically oust and throw another vote. So, through a recall or whatever, so, um, everything Shelby said I agree with, but I think we should move forward with this on exploratory, but I think we'd do it rather, rather quickly as well.
I, I think hearing from the current town, town clerk and gathering some additional information will inform whether this should move to a charter review committee or, or not, as far as the discussion of moving forward.
Sure.
You know, first there's, do we move forward with this concept, and then what's the best way to move forward?
Yep.
And I think to answer both those questions, it would be good to hear from our current town clerk, past town clerks.
Sure.
And others.
I, I'm, I'm wondering who would be best, um, to kind of, for us to hear from around kind of the process, so.
Me?
Oh, well, I don't know. No, 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 well, that's great, that's great, that's great, if it's you, I didn't know if it would be our town moderator, I didn't know if it would be councilite, that's, okay. You, great, there you go, thank you, you, all right, super.
And it sounds like, uh,
I didn't know about the way it was supposed to, sorry.
Shaw, but I think it was to move on this rather quickly if we can, 'cause I think it is an important topic to press address.
For annual town meeting, if you were to move forward, is that what you're thinking, or just in general?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't know that we have time to go through it, I mean, I don't, no, I, I don't see us making annual town meetings.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I agree.
But I do think we should have, start the discussions and move it, so whether it's fall or the next annual town meeting, we have to figure that, but I, I think it's starting sooner than later, but I do think that learning from the town planner stuff is, is that we wanna do it right, and if it's charter review, it's gonna take some time, and to the point of, do we just, is it a single item charter review, or do we wanna do a broader charter review, you should have all those discussions, but, time creeps up on us, and I think the sooner we start moving forward on this, the better.
Yeah, Amy, did you have any comments, Alan? No. Um, yeah, I, I look at this discussion, um, you know, I, I don't know the last time there was a contested town clerk election. Um, I, I can't think of one. I think, you know, we are set in a position currently, at my understanding is our assistant town clerk actually now lives in town.
I, I told you that, but I was wrong.
Yeah, maybe doesn't. Um, so, um-
I could.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, I, I think it, it never hurts to, to discuss something and, and reconsider it periodically, to make sure it is how we wanna things to function, and, and we think that's the proper way to do things. Um, I don't know that this is something we need to move quickly on. Um, I think Deb's in the job for a while now, but, um-
No, when I say quickly, I mean, to that question, I don't, this is, to me, this is, there's no way we're ready for a annual town meeting in March. But I think it's, even if it's a year from this March, I think that to do it right is gonna take time and-
Socializing the idea, exactly, yep.
Hearing the comments.
There would be public-
Absolutely.
Yep, absolutely. But I do think inaction creates, really creates, uh, I don't even wanna call it a blindside, but risks that I don't wanna be responsible for.
Yeah. I, I think if you look statewide, I think the vast majority of town clerks are still elected.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, it, it can't hurt to, to review this and get thoughts and opinions of those involved and, and members of the community. of those involved and, and members of the community who it's important to, so.
I think there's a lot of communities that are having the same conversations.
Okay, so, I guess to recap, we're going to talk to, we're going to have Deb come and talk to us.
Did you, someone said past, did you also want me to invite Wendy Nichol?
I think you'd be helpful.
Yeah, if she's, she's willing to come in.
What would be?
I thought one of you said past town clerk, so that's.
Yeah, I said past town clerk, merely because she had brought forward this concept as well.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't act on it at the time, but it'd be good, given her tenure and the changes of the role and the function that she's lived through. Just get her, she might not feel the same way that she felt when she brought it forward, but it'd be good to see her perspective.
Historical context changing and the changes in the position to kind of.
Historical change in position, stuff like that.
Okay, no, that makes sense.
So although she's retired, if she's willing to voluntarily enter this building again. All right, thank you. Next, we have item number eight, request to amend the compensation schedule for recreation referees.
Hi, I'm Jen Kirkland, the recreation director. Thank you for taking the time to hear this item tonight. So I'm here tonight to ask if we can increase the rate at which we pay our, our Westboro rec basketball referees. Currently, we, we, so we do things a little bit differently than other towns do. We have our referees get onto our payroll, which is, which is fine, but they're subject to significant deductions that referees aren't typically used to, used to having. Usually referees are just paid, if you give fifty bucks a game, that's what you get. So I'm proposing to have the refs paid fifty-five dollars per elementary school game, and then seventy dollars per game for middle school and high school. You'll see, I believe, in your packet, there's some comparisons for what other towns and what other leagues pay their referees. And just to note, so we only hire certified referees that are, go through the IAABO certification process, so these are all certified refs that go through the class, they pass the test. We, like I said, we have our refs come onto our payroll. Other towns that I talked to, they are all paying their referees as vendors, so there's already a small pool of referees to choose from, so we're almost kind of, you know, think of it, they're probably going to pick, if they had their choice, travel, JV, or varsity games, and then if they can't get those games, they'll, if they have availability, they'll probably go to towns that where they can just be paid as a vendor, and then we're sort of third, and we've heard this from referees that have refed for us, just because of this paperwork aspect and the deductions. So increasing the rates kind of makes us more attractive to be able to continue to retain referees for our league. Our league is pretty big, we have over five hundred and fifty participants, so there are a lot of kids that depend on this program, and the referees, they're there to ref the game, but they're also there to, they help us, especially in the middle school and high school leagues. Those kids take those games very seriously, so they're there to ref the games, but they're also there managing the emotions of teenage, teenage players. And just to note, these rates, these, their salaries come out of our revolving account, so this isn't a burden to the town, it's all through user fees, and after doing the budget, we can't afford to pay these rates. So, and another thing I should know, I won't be here next year or the year after, these rates are high, they sound high, fifty-five dollars a game, seventy dollars a game, and they are, but like I said, it'll make us a more attractive, you know, town to work with, and it should last us at least five years, maybe even more. The last time I was here for, to get an increase, I think, was 2016.
She'll, she'll be here.
I know that.
She just won't be back.
Oh, yeah. I'm here, no, I won't be here, ask me, so.
Did you see the look of panic on our faces?
No, I didn't even notice I said that.
That was an awkward reservation.
Yeah, I will be here. I'll be here.
Do this now, and I'll be here.
Yeah, do it now. No, I will be here.
Okay, you just won't be here about this topic.
About this topic, yes, you're right.
So I'll move to amend the compensation plan adjusting referee pay as presented.
Second.
Can I ask a question of Jen before?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I'm curious, and maybe this is for Kristi, why, why do we go through the payroll route when other municipalities are doing it by vendor, and obviously they feel like that's an appropriate way to do it as well?
They do feel like it's an appropriate way to do it, but we did a review of contractors versus vendors, how we handle certain employees several years ago, and we feel it's appropriate to do it this way.
Okay, and, and so, and you're not, obviously, as part of this, recommending a change to that process?
No.
So, before we vote, tangential, last year, we talked about lifeguard pay, and given that we're in budget prep cycle, and lifeguard shortages are still an issue, will that, is there a need for further adjustment on lifeguards?
So that won't be reflected, that's actually not on the same timeline, because they are paid through the revolving account also, so you won't hear that in the budget discussions, but if Jen wanted to update the classification plan, she would, similarly would come back.
Right, so, but with enough lead time for the recruiting and people who are interested who, but need to get certified before the beach opens.
Right, so probably, I would say, January, February, I mean, definitely looking at it, starting to look, think about it now, but that'd probably, so I will come back.
Okay, so it's on the radar, that's why, I'm just checking, that's great.
Yeah.
All right, so we had a motion, we had a second. All those in favor?
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Glad you'll be back.
Please come back.
Kim is presenting the other ones, she's still.
She's there.
We put her face up there.
We'll have to ask Westboro TV to switch it back on.
Okay, so we knock on the door.
Can you just give a, Kim is presenting the next item. We just want to see.
She's just not on the screen, too.
Can we get, you want to explain to Kim about nursing, Olivia?
At all.
It's on any of the screens. Thanks.
Oh, it's the.
Is it just that?
Oop, she'll drive.
She's on in there.
Look, there she is.
There she is.
She's on a lot.
That's fine. Oh, bye.
We just couldn't see you.
Kim, 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 Kim.
All set?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so the next item is really two requests related to amending position, job descriptions for two DPW positions. The first one is the parks lead person, so the lead person positions are supervisory positions. With a recent retirement, we are reviewing the position. This is the only supervisory position that currently does not have a requirement for the, a commercial driver's license, so we're looking to add, excuse me, to add that requirement. We are looking to add language that would provide a year's timeframe from the date of appointment to the position to getting that license. So that's reflected in the marked up version of the job description that was in your packet.
Can I ask a question? Can you just elaborate a little bit on the director's view of why this is an important credential to have for this particular position?
It expands the equipment that the incumbent can utilize, and I think what we've seen in recent years with the current director being here, while positions have specific areas of focus, there are times when they're needed to pitch in and do other work, so having a commercial driver's license really just extends or expands the flexibility of this role.
Sure, okay, that's what I assumed, thank you. Are you looking for an, separate votes, Mr. Chair?
Oh, sure.
Yes. In one thing, I would just, if you would add to the motion, subject approval, and it would be subject to appropriate notification to the DPW union.
So I would move to approve the amendments to the parks lead person job description as presented, and to allow for the appropriate notification period to the DPW union.
Second. All those in favor? Four to zero. Next one, Kim.
All right, the next one, so we're seeking to amend the licensing requirements for our maintenance craft person positions. Those job descriptions currently have language that requires a commercial driver's license. The way it's written, the requirement is from day one. We're looking to change that language to provide a year's timeframe from the date of hire for the incumbent to receive that license. This is another license and position that we're seeing, it's not just us, other communities, and in fact nationwide, commercial driver's license candidates are tougher to find. There are here in Massachusetts and across the country increased requirements to obtain that licensure. One of the significant factors is when you take the test to obtain the license, you have to be driving a commercial vehicle, and many individuals do not have access to that on their own. So what we're looking to do to enhance our ability to both recruit and retain, we want to provide that twelve-month window from hire for someone to have the opportunity to obtain the license. And I just want to be clear, there's plenty of other, when you look at the other job functions, the individual can perform many of those functions without the CDL, just long-term, again, the commercial driver's license affects, means that they can operate additional equipment over time.
All right, questions?
Do we need the same contingency for the union on this motion?
Yes, please.
So I move to approve the amendments to the maintenance crafts person one job descriptions for the highway, parks, cemetery, tree, and water and sewer divisions as presented, and provide for sufficient notification as required for the DPW union.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor? Four to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Approval, we're skipping over item ten, sorry, we're going to the town manager's report.
So just wanted to let the board know that the emergency assistance shelter at the Sharp Building is on track to open this month, so the shelter will house approximately twenty families and will be supported by the South Middlesex Opportunity Council, or SMOC. And the Board of Health, the Board of Health has voted to have par, sorry, Paravalal.
Pari.
Pari.
Pari, okay. As an agent of the Board for Tobacco Compliance, Pari is part, there it is, Pari is part of the Metro West District, based out of Framingham. The Health Department has received a recycling dividend program grant from DEP to help maximize reuse, recycling, and waste reduction. In the Public Works Department, rehabilitation of the upper spillway at Sandra Pond is complete. Our state dam inspection, which occurs every five years, is scheduled to be completed this month. Winter cycle of the DPW sector maintenance program begins this week with Sector One, which is in the West Main, Adams Street area of town. The cycle is ten weeks to coincide with ten sectors. Bids for the water system project to install booster stations at two water tanks came in higher than expected. ARPA funding was expected to pay for the project, additional funding options are being considered, the goal of contracting the project before the bid expires. The DPW welcomed Nick Wideman as a laborer with the Cemetery Division. In the Fire Department, the Fire Department received a donation of twenty-eight thousand dollars from Amazon Robotics last week. These funds will be used to enhance the delivery of EMS in the community by supporting the purchase of BiPAP, bilateral positive airway pressure equipment, used to treat certain patients with impaired breathing. Remaining funding will be used to procure a forcible entry training prop. The Fire Department has been issued a regulation memorandum from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health regarding requirements to vaccinate healthcare personnel for COVID-19 and influenza. This regulation stretches beyond the EMS providers to include many other individuals involved in or related to healthcare. The department is evaluating this impact currently from all aspects, including the employees through the, through the workload required to implement the program. A copy of the memorandum has been provided. Send that to you, I don't see it here. The Fire Department will see two retirements in the upcoming weeks. On December sixth, firefighter, paramedic John Winslow will retire after serving in the public safety for over thirty-two years, twenty-one of which were in Westboro. On December eleventh, firefighter, paramedic Jerry Jettie will retire after serving in public safety for over thirty-two years, twenty-four of which in Westboro. In the Police Department, a new officer, Sean Nelson, currently with the Mills Police Department, will be joining the department in early December, and they're still interviewing to fill one vacant position. The latest municipal road safety grant campaign started on December first and runs through the end of the month, focused on impaired driving, distracted driving, and seatbelt use. The federal funding will also be used by the department to purchase all new portable breath testing devices for the patrol fleet. That's it.
Thank you very much. Onto our final item, issuing correspondence of the Select Board, do I have a volunteer?
Yeah, I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Well said.
Nothing new this evening.
I just want to remind folks that the Holiday House Tour, hosted by the Women's Club, is taking place this weekend. Tickets can still be purchased at the Town Clerk's Office, and by contacting the Westboro Women's Club, they'll be happy to give you a ticket. It is their largest fundraiser of the year, and I want to thank them for doing this for like twenty-five years, so there are four homes that will be open for ticket holders to view, and it's a, it's a great tradition in Westboro. And that's all I have.
Shelby, thank you very much. And lastly, a reminder, it was mentioned earlier tonight, in this room, this coming Tuesday, the Dog Park, there will be an information session on the Dog Park at, what time?
I think it's six PM.
Six PM.
On the town's amazing new website.
That's true, and they plug the website, yes, yes.
And the session's open to residents, dogs should watch the live stream from home.
Thank, thank you, and thank you to Westboro TV. Can I get a motion?
That would be me. I move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Police Patrol and Police Supervisors Union, if the chair determines that an open meeting would have detrimental impact on the board's position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro Lax Media LLC and Lax Media MA LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA Number 2285 CV 01281, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental, detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC Land Court Case Number 19 TL 000768, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Westboro SPE LLC versus Town of Westboro et al., US District Court, CA Number 4:23 CV 120, or, excuse me, CV 12017-MRG, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding, regarding, does that in need to be there? I just want to make sure, regarding, sorry.
Which one are you on, sorry?
Just above.
You can just say with respect to litigation, RE.
Okay, I just saw regarding in, I just want to make sure, not reading that.
The in might be a mistake.
Okay, let me, let me read that one again. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding RE Westboro SPE LLC US Bankruptcy Court Case Number 2023-40709, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 1500 Union Street, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the Select Board to approve executive session minutes of November 16, 2023.
I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating. I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating, litigating, and bargaining position. The board will not be reconvening an open session after executive session. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Kio, yes. We are now in executive session, thank you.